Good evening. I call the May 23, 2017, regular meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And I'll ask Pastor Robert Lee of Fairwood Agapi Baptist Church to give our invocation. I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand and invite anybody else that wants to stand. Afterwards, Councilman Bill Moody will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance.
Good evening. Let us pray. Father, we come tonight to ask your wisdom, your guidance, to rest in here tonight. We pray, Father, for our mayor, our city council, and all the citizens of this great city. And let everything that's been done tonight be done to your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members of council, if you indicate your presence here by voting yes. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have minutes of a call meeting of May 9, 2017, and the minutes of a regular meeting May 9, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly seconded. To approve, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We have a special presentation tonight, and that is the presentation of lapel pins to those persons who have been appointed to boards and commissions by the city council. And the pinning will be done by our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Cherry. And Madam Clerk, would you call those that are getting pinned?
Yes, sir. With the Downtown Design Committee, if Mara Bethia would join the Vice Mayor at the Sergeant in Arms Desk. With the History Commission, Ms. Sandra Barclay. Ms. Brooke Miller. Mr. Peter Adams, excuse me. With the Library Board, Mr. Joseph Moglen. With the Museums and Fine Arts Commission, Ms. Clifford King Harbin. With the Parks and Recreation Commission, Ms. Dolores Knight. Mrs. Wynne Lalonde. Mr. William Marslander.
That's where they can see you.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you, buddy. First, let me just congratulate all of you on your appointments, but also thank you for being willing to serve and give your time to the city of Portsmouth. You know, we make a lot of decisions on city council, but we count on the wisdom and the recommendations from the boards and commissions to get, to make sure, help us get it right. And we know all you're gonna get, in most cases, maybe a free lunch. Maybe, depending on what time your board meets. So we really appreciate it, all you're gonna do, that we know you're gonna do to help us move this city forward. And to all of you out there who are watching and in the audience and on TV, there are other boards and commissions that are open. Please come and join this group of great citizens to help us move this city forward. And I'd like for you to give them a round of applause. Do we have one brave soul that wants to speak for the group? Say a few words? I was gonna stick one of y'all, too.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I hope I speak for all, everyone up here that, we want to thank you for this opportunity for recognition, even though that's not what we're seeking. And we look forward to contributing as best we can to the benefit of the city of Portsmouth.
Well said. Thank you very much. Glad to listen to you all. Glad to listen again.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for volunteering to serve our great city. And thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for citizens who desire to speak?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This brings us to item 17201, under Unfinished Business. And this is an amendment to the city code. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Appendix B to Chapter 40.1 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Sections 202, 203, and 802 for the purpose of providing flexibility in the provisions of the Uptown D2 FBC district while still adhering to the basic concepts and principles of the district.
This matters on its second reading, is so that we can discuss it. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt. Second.
We have a motion to adopt, and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries?
Yes, sir.
This brings us to item 17222, under the City Manager's Report. And this is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance excepting a grant. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an emergency food and shelter national board program grant in the amount of $12,135 from the Department of Homeland Security and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to provide assistance to Portsmouth citizens who have emergency shelter or utility needs.
Thank you. In order to get this matter before us, there's a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, and it's duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries. This brings us to item 17223, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance excepting another grant. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a Title IV grant, E grant, in the amount of $4,500 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to fund the cost of an international home study.
In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion that's been duly seconded. To approve, any discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17224, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance excepting a donation. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting, with appreciation, a donation of $900 to the city from Benjamin Hendrick and appropriating said funds to the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to operate the food pantry program.
In order to get this before us, for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly seconded. To adopt, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17225, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance excepting a certain grant. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a Title IV E grant in the amount of $300,000 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to fund allowable costs under the Title IV E foster care program.
In order to get this matter before us, for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance that's been duly seconded. It's ready for discussion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, this motion carries. Which brings us to new business, item 17226, Boards and Commissions, Vice Mayor Cherry.
May we have no nominations for tonight?
Thank you, sir. Item 17227, items submitted by council members. Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, upcoming this weekend is Memorial Day Weekend, when we honor our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and MIA's from conflicts while serving this country. In addition, it's a Moja Festival Weekend, which begins this Friday night. All day Saturday will be activities. And on Sunday, there are little brochures and posters like this all over the place. You can get all the list of activities, which band is playing when. Saturday morning, the Elizabeth River Run will be taking place in the downtown area, beginning at 7:00 in the morning. So if you are, there's a registration and check-in up until 7:45. And there is a run at 7:45, another run at 8:15. So traffic will be a little strange in the immediate downtown area along the waterfront early Saturday morning. On Monday, actually Memorial Day, at 10:00 AM, rain or shine, we will have the 133rd Annual Memorial Day Parade, which is one of the longest continuously operating Memorial Day parades in the United States. This year's theme will be honoring the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, celebrating its 250th birthday this year. So the Grand Marshal is the commanding officer of the naval shipyard, Captain Brown. I will be returning this year as the emcee, as the military affairs liaison for the council. Following the parade, there will be a very short ceremony honoring our folks who have died in service to this country, and that will be in the courtyard at High and Court Street in the Art and Cultural Center. It's about a 15-minute ceremony honoring those who have died and those who are missing in action. And after Memorial Day, we'll take a break. And then a week later, on June 13, we have the Mayor's Cup Blood Drive, which is not just for city employees, it's also for citizens to participate. And so on Tuesday, June 13, here in City Hall, from 8:30 to 12:30, we would be happy not only to take your taxes, but your blood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. At our next meeting, I'm asking if we could get an update on the SIPSA contract. I know each of us received the email from the attorney, and it appears that the deadline for the contract with Dominion Power, that that's coming up by the end of this month. And so can we put that on the agenda? There's no objection from council for a public work session. City manager, give us an update of where we are on the SIPSA agreement. Also, we had a presentation yesterday by HRTAC, and I would hope that we would have a little more serious discussion in regards to pursuing, from a legal standpoint, the issue of this tolling on our citizens. I know we have discussed it in the past, but I would hope we could have, in our next session, some more deliberation on whether we have truly exhausted all of the legal routes to this tolling issue. I was surprised to see yesterday that the information that was given by the Executive Director indicated that there's about $500 million, I believe he said, over a 50-year period, that we're expected to receive in tolls once the new tolls are put on. But the information that I think the citizens should be concerned about is the fact that he also gave information, if you go back and look at that, pertaining to how much we can receive through an increase in sales tax and also gasoline tax. And those amounts that are received would more than cover what we would be receiving in tolls. And I hope that we can have some type of discussion on pursuing this matter, because this is impacting on certain citizens in our community who have significant income issues, and it's also putting quite a bit of burden on our roads. And so if there's no objection from council, I would hope we can have, I know that there was discussion yesterday about sending a letter, but I think we really need to talk about, have we really exhausted all of the legal channels? The other issue is that, and hopefully we'll get this at our PRHA meeting in regards to the update on the GPDC matter. I asked the city attorney about that yesterday, and my concern is that that property goes into receivership. The city could stand to lose on that deal, and I think we really need to discuss that. The last issue I just want to mention is that I want to commend the city councils, both in Charlottesville, Virginia, and also in New Orleans, for showing moral leadership. I know it has been highly publicized over the news about the removal of a stain from those cities, which we have echoed here from this place, and that is the removal of those Confederate statues. And I would like to just share this statement that was made by the mayor of New Orleans, Mitch Landreau. And once again, I think it's one thing to be a leader, it's another thing to show moral leadership and courage. And I just want to read this excerpt from his speech that he gave. "When the final monument of Robert E. Lee, whose arms were crossed defiantly facing the north in that statue," he stated that "the historic record is clear. The Robert E. Lee, Jefferson Davis, and P.G. Bergard statutes were not erected just to honor these men, but as part of the movement which became known as the Cult of the Lost Cause. The cult had one goal, through monuments and through other means, to rewrite history to hide the truth, which is that the Confederacy was on the wrong side of humanity." And I want to commend those councils for showing moral leadership, because that's what we need here in this city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With no objection from council, we'll put the SIPSA status report and a further discussion on tolls on the work session agenda for the next Monday meeting. Okay. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of meetings ago, related complaint I had from a resident of Portsmouth, they had their car parked in front of their own house on a city street, and lo and behold, they got a ticket because the car had been there for 48 hours. And when I brought that up, I thought we had a consensus, so I guess I'm checking to see how we're coming along rewording that ordinance, because I don't think that's the intent of the ordinance, to ticket or to tow cars of homeowners who park their cars in front of their house and stand a chance of maybe leaving it there for 48 hours if they're flying out of town or going someplace, or got numerous cars. I don't think we want to be towing and ticketing cars of homeowners. I think it's intended for someone who parks the car in front of a residence who's not theirs and leaves it there for a considerable period of time. So, Mayor, I guess I'm asking the city manager to see if any progress has been made, or maybe you can bring it back at our next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Mr. Moody called us to my attention, and we will come back with an update at the public work session on Tuesday, June 12.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
No, Monday, June 12.
Yes, sir.
One more item. In fact, the city manager shared it with us right at the end of the work session this evening. Some good news from the Virginia Port Authority. As many residents have heard, we're working on bringing portside back, portside-like facility. And the Virginia Port Authority announced to our city manager that they are gonna give us a grant for $109,650 to help in that effort of rebuilding a portside facility, and also $25,000 for construction of a river academy at Paradise Creek Nature Park. So we've been fortunate that, I guess, we've received two grants. The first one helped build our fishing pier. Now they're gonna assist us with some money to help build those two facilities. So yay for the Port Authority, and thank you for sharing that, Dr. Patton.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Dr. Patton, as far as portside, that grant covers the total cost of construction. I don't remember that figure that you gave us at our last meeting.
Dr. Patton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, Dr. Whitaker, in our CIP budget, we have the $750,000 that's approved for portside. On top of that now, we have the $109,650.
Okay, so the balance will come from?
The balance, that is the figures that we're working on to build the structure that we are proposing.
So the one, I thought I just heard, did you say $150,000?
No. $109,650 is the award from the Port Authority.
Right. And how much was budgeted?
$750,000.
Right. So where will the difference come from?
We are looking to stay within budget as much as possible with the grant and the CIP funding.
Right, so the CIP funding will provide the remainder?
That's $750,000. That's what it approved.
Thank you. This brings us to 17227, which is Report on Pending Items. Are there any pending items? Dr. Patton? No. Okay. This brings us to item 17229, Non-Agenda Speakers. And our first speaker is Denise Byrd, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Denise Byrd, and I reside at 3908 Winchester Drive. The issue at hand is flooding in my and my neighbor's back and side yards. The other houses involved are 3906 and 3910 Winchester Drive. We all have resided in our homes for over 10 years, and over that 10 years, we've had Hurricane Isabel and other natural occurrences, and we never had any problems with flooding until there was a new construction house built at 4012, next door to 3906, about two years ago. Since then, we experience flooding every time it rains, whether it's a named storm or not. We're unable to enjoy our backyards or our homes now. We are a health hazard now because of the standing water. We have mosquitoes. We have incurred increased costs for exterminators because we now have water bugs because of the moisture. Increased power bills because we're running pumps. My neighbor at 3906, she has pumps in her crawl space. She's constantly pumping. I have a pump in my backyard, so we're always pumping water, trying to get the water out. She's also had to replace her, oh, I got off track. She's also had to replace her ductwork because it got flooded in her crawl space. She has possible mold. And we also have, now we have, where the standing water is, we actually have lily pads growing in our backyard. My neighbor on the other side of me has ducks swimming in his backyard. We also have two trees that we're looking at that look like they might be dying because of that standing water that we just cannot get rid of. We also have small sinkholes in our yards. We've all been to the mayor's office, the city engineer, and waterworks, and the city manager. Everybody has been cooperative with us, but we need some definite answers to help us fix our problem that's been going on for two years since they built that house. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Patton, would you ask one of your deputies to get the contact information? You do have some information?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, staff met with three residents from Winchester today, and their concern is that they believe that the new house constructed at 4012 Winchester is now blocking the drainage, causing flooding in their backyards. They think there is a line that runs from their properties and connected to the line next to the drive on 4012. Our team have scheduled to have the CCTV lines checked next week. The storm drain lines to the north on Arlington, and the south from Winchester to Greenway Court Street. We'll provide feedbacks to these residents as soon as this information is gathered. But our team met with the Winchester representatives today and working on this issue, which is just coming to my attention.
Okay, good. Please keep us posted. Next speaker is Marcus Swett. Next speaker is Luther Anderson, Sr. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of city council. I'm sure some of you are familiar with me, because I've been up here before, and I've worked with Councilman Moody and the mayor, and with Ms. Simmons on some programs that I want to try to get re-implemented in the schools here, and that's in the high schools for juniors and seniors. And it's the old CERT program that we had going here in this city. And in this day and time, with everything that's happening in the real world, these type of programs, I feel like, would be beneficiary to these kids, because you never know what's gonna happen or where it's gonna happen. We witnessed that yesterday. We hope that never happens. But in training these kids on a 20-hour training program, which I would like to try to talk with the school board, which I'm planning to do, and get with them and see how they feel about this program, and then I will bring it back to city council. But this would be like on a 20-week period of one hour each week to train these kids in this program. I'm very familiar with the program. I'm trained as a training trainer out of Michigan. I've been through, in fact, I helped start the CERT program with Monty Gilbert when we started the program here in this city. And again, like I say, I feel that this would be very beneficiary to our juniors and seniors in the high schools, and someday may save a life. And after I do this research and talk with the school board, I would come back to the city council and show you what we've done as far as where we're going to move with the program and getting it started back in the schools. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, I really do appreciate being back. It's been two years and I've been gone, and I'm really glad to be back doing something again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Moody, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to thank Mr. Anderson for bringing that to our attention. I remember when it was kicked off, I don't know, gee, probably ten years ago now. In fact, one of our former colleagues, Ms. Marlene Randall, even went through the program, the certification program, and she was always very proud of that, rightly so. But I think the program has a lot of merit, especially as Mr. Anderson mentioned, doing storms, emergencies. It allows communities to have a response team. In fact, I think there was a CERT trailer or mobile unit that was equipped, pretty modern at the time. I'm sure it's probably not too modern now, but we need to, Mayor, I think we need to revisit that program, and maybe the city manager can brief council on what that would take and how that would manifest itself to implement the program. And I like your idea of doing it via the high schools and get the young folks involved. Thanks, Mr. Anderson, thanks for coming here.
Thank you, sir. With the concurrence of council, we'll ask the city manager to also brief us on that. The next speaker is Mark Jagoldy Yotrowski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. So you finalized the budget for fiscal year 2018, and you have established as one of your priority items, improving the quality of the education system in Portsmouth. My colleague Kathy Revel liked to say during the campaign season just passed, that a budget is the best expression of your values. Based on that expression of values, I find it hard to see how you are going to meet your goal of improving the educational system in Portsmouth. I had a very good conversation with one of the members of council at the coffee talk this Saturday, and it was his view that since the school board was able to cut their budget to allow for pay increases for their employees, that essentially the mission was accomplished because they found the money to do what they had come here to ask you to assist with. But what gets, what gets missed in that analysis is the fact that there are functions and services that the school system will not be providing because of the opportunity-cost decision. So something that's on the cutting room floor may well be something that really needs to be done, but this was prioritized at a higher level. And I don't disagree with their prioritization. If city money is being allocated to increase the salary for city employees, it seems appropriate that money would also be allocated for increasing the salaries of school employees. And what muddies the water somewhat is that this is a shared cost. The Commonwealth does provide a certain amount of funding, but on its own schedule, for salaries in the school system. However, those salaries are for the professional staff, and those allocations from the General Assembly come in next year, so more than halfway through the current fiscal year. In other words, council has treated the employees of the school system as a lower priority Salaries are not the only factor in school success, but they cannot be ignored as a factor. And underfunding the schools is not going to get them to a higher level of accomplishment. So I'm interested to see what you all are going to do, what tangible steps you are going to take to implement your stated goal of improving the schools. Now, I would like, I would be remiss if I did not thank council members Cherry, Lucas Burke, and council member Whitaker for voting against the allocation that you made to the schools because of its inadequacy. In fact, council member Whitaker has been a constant voice for better support for the school system. It is a shame that a majority of council could not be found to allocate that additional money, which was only a portion of the money that the school system requested at the beginning of the budget process. Actions speak louder than words.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Whitaker, you've got the floor?
Yes, Mr. Jagoldy Yotrowski, I want to thank you for your comments, I share your sentiments. I think that what we experienced with the budget was a disgrace and a disservice, not only to the employees, but also to our children. And for us to sit up here and cut education as we did, which whenever you provide level funding, and I know persons in here who have to maintain a household know that costs increase over the years, and so if you're given level funding, then you are in essence cutting education because you're not keeping up with the cost. What's highly disturbing to me is the silence from the community, that I don't hear voices that have benefited from education. And the only way that there are certain people in this community who are in the positions that they are today is because of education. It's the new currency of the 21st century. And so I'm disturbed that there's a silence on this issue when we just last week recognized the May 17, 1954 Brown versus Board of Education decision, separate but equal. And now we see these backdoor tactics that still keep us in these positions of inadequate and inferior education. And as someone who is sitting on the college campuses and see some of the products that are coming out of our public schools, not just in Portsmouth, but across the country, and to see the national attack on education, and to see Portsmouth cooperating with that is a disgrace. And then lastly, I think it is a disgrace because there were some members on this council that were endorsed by the Martin Luther King Steering Committee. Very, the very person who epitomized the importance of education, and they did not fight for the funding. I expect certain folks to do what they do, but not those who have been recipients and come out of the struggle. I don't expect that. And so I'm highly disturbed by the funding, and I appreciate your voice and speaking to it, and I would hope that others within the community would also lift up their voices, and not only their voices, but their vote. And if there's going to be a difference, then you have to change the makeup of those who do not support education, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Reverend Corey Newell. And sir, you've got five minutes.
Good evening, honorable members of council. My name is Reverend Corey Newell. I'm almost happy to say that I'm one of Portsmouth's happiest and newest residents at 431 Russell Street in Waterview. I live in a brilliant neighborhood, you see. It's got the kindest neighbors ever. The house that I bought is beautiful. It's fully remodeled with a white picket fence and everything. It's the charm of that older vintage home with the great upgrades that appealed to my interest. This is my partner's in my first home. You see, my name is the Reverend Corey Newell, and I have two master's degrees. I run two businesses. I was voted a Small Business of the Year by Hampton Roads Chamber. I'm one of the top forty, under forty business executives in Hampton Roads awarded by Inside Business Magazine. I'm a published person. I'm a subject-level expert. I'm a Rotarian. I train and I speak all over the country, and I love bringing my clients to Portsmouth. I reach out to each of you through email regarding the situation that occurred at my home with utilities. You see, my closing attorney sent our settlement statement to the utilities office on December 15th. That was the day of my closing to start services. But on May 17th, our water was terminated without any notice, no phone call, no email, no letter mail, not a single word. I spoke with the emergency number and shared our story. He looked up our account and explained that we were not a customer. And I described what took place at our closing, and he said that wasn't good enough because we are not a customer. There is no recourse or obligation to even speak with me. He stated that water is a service, not a human right, and I pleaded with him to speak with his supervisor, which was Erin, the director, and she agreed also that water is a service and not a human right. Erin was God that night, and that was that. I shared moments, what bits of our conversation the next day when her and I met, but I will not read that to you. You can read it yourself. But Portsmouth certainly can't do better than that conversation that the director and I had. However, she reflected the city manager and every single one of you that day, as ugly and as angry as it was, an obvious disdain and tension was there, and there was no room for dialogue, except that she was busy, and she haughtily dismissed me so she can get to her other godlike duties that day. No person or citizen should experience the lack of humanity that Erin displayed to me that day. In fact, I'm still waiting for an apology from her, and even though I have power of attorney, she has bullied the situation to indicate that she will only speak to the account holder, my partner, henceforth, forever. Same-sex couples receive this type of discrimination all the time, and it's to no surprise that it would come from Erin. In fact, I'm still waiting for a response from our city manager to meet with me. I made that request on the 18th, ma'am, in your office. While I'm not here to discuss personnel issues, I stand here before you today to request that the city code would change to match the language of the Virginia State Code regarding particularly utilities. No single person should have the power to remove water without a standard operating procedure to make the account whole again. If there was one letter mailed to me, a single phone call given, or even a door knocker left on my door, I would have called and sorted and made things right. The city should work in the construct of good citizenry and then take drastic efforts, rather than the current status quo of taking such drastic efforts first. But I had no idea there was nothing wrong with my account, but I did not deserve to be treated the way that I was, and Erin had complete control of the situation. So let's remove the God card from Erin's hands and give her a standard operating procedure, one that the SEC and the Virginia State Code uses, so require a seven-day notice before water services continue. A notice should be given, and an opportunity for the citizen, whether a customer or not, should make the account whole again. An opportunity should be created. Erin does not have to play God anymore. Did you know that in all seven cities except for Portsmouth, every single one of them function with a better system? Every single locality option of starting service with an email, or fax, or a phone call to start service? Portsmouth is the only locality that requires an eyeball-to-eyeball visit. Why can't this antiquated system be updated? All seven cities except for Portsmouth use some sort of form of language from the Virginia State Code, which requires notice to be given before any type of water gets cut off, a five, a seven, or a 10-day notice. Each city has that except for Portsmouth. Additionally, I would like to request that you update the city's website to create some sort of better assimilation process for new residents like myself, so that we can navigate the system services even better. I'm finally a real resident now because I'm a water customer, finally, and this terrible welcome-to-Portsmouth services and Erin's behavior reflected each of you poorly. My requests before you today are as follows. One, ask the city manager to return my message and meet with me to discuss the personnel issues I've experienced with her employee, to request an application process to be made simpler so that closing offices can send settlement statements to match the rest of the seven cities and start accounts. Three, to update the language of turning off services immediately, from immediately, from five to seven or 10-day notices. And four, to update the city's website to assimilate and create a better experience. All of this will fix and make this city a better place and a better experience, and I trust that all of you will make this situation and fix this. And if I could just hear this one quote?
No, sir. Your time is up.
Okay, you have a quote from the Pope that shares that?
We have your statement. Thank you, sir.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Has his, has his issue been addressed?
No, it hasn't.
Has it been addressed with the city manager?
Dr. Patton, you want to address this matter?
Mayor, we have addressed the issue with regard to the account holder, and we'll take a look at the reverend's statements tonight and also review those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And Donna Si, ma'am, you've got five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Today, at the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission meeting, a security guard came up before the meeting started to ask if someone in the room had a truck. The security guard stated that it was parked in a reserved space. A commissioner acknowledged that it was his truck. A deputy city manager left the room. The commissioner went out of the room and shortly came back into the meeting. Evidently, the deputy city manager talked with the security guard so that the commissioner didn't have to move his truck from the reserved parking space. My question is this: As a citizen, if I had parked in someone's reserved parking space, would I have been allowed to remain in it, or would I have had to move out of the reserved parking space? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, this completes our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.